I'll leave that part up to you, Mr. Mayor. But I will call the rolls, sir.
Okay, well, you called the rolls.
Mayor William Bill Edward. Mayor Pro Tem Mark Baker. Councilmember Catherine Ralph. Councilmember Carmen Lisa Gomes.
Here.
Councilmember Helen T. Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Naima Giliar.
Here.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Cleve.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a word. We now have our implication by our chaplain, all by the Spirit of the Senate.
Let us stand. Let us pray. There is a word that tells us that our steps are ordered. There is also a word to tell us that daily blessings are laid up for us. Just to be in the presence of each other is a blessing. And we thank you for once again allowing us to be here. Because our steps are ordered, oh God, this meant that we are here. That our mayor and council are here. And that the order of the day has been set. So that your wisdom fall upon us and that everything that is said and everything that is done will remind us that there is someone greater that is in charge, that has given us charge. And as we pray, let us all say, Amen.
Amen.
Let us reach out to the flag of the United States of America and to the equality for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may excuse me.
Thank you.
The first item for action is approval of the consent agenda. You have the meeting minutes from Tuesday, January ninth. Work session in, we're going to do a meeting and request approval to amend Resolution 2018 dash zero zero three, an adjustment to the Community Development Services Department's 2018 calendar, added by question sponsored by Councilmember Jackson for Calvin Malar Senior.
I'll then adjourn the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly move the second in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Think that passes unanimously. Yeah, it passes unanimously. Alright, go ahead.
Alright, next item is approval of the regular meeting agenda.
I'll adjourn the motion to approve the regular meeting agenda.
She wants you.
Alright, ma'am.
Um, I need, I need to amend the, um, regular agenda to include, uh, ordinance defining the duties and powers of the city department heads providing for their appointment and for other purposes.
I second. Question?
Yes.
Uh, council, is this an ordinance of, uh, emergency?
Uh, that would be in the discretion of the chair, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I don't find that as an emergency, uh, to get this done. And is that what the charter spells? Where is the original, is it changed to charter?
I've got a prayer. It's, uh, it's section two, two thousand two of ordinance number two thousand seven zero zero, uh, two thousand seventeen zero zero three.
Seven one six. It's section seven one six, number eight, that this has been.
Yes, ma'am, but I'm speaking to, uh, the procedural matter. Um, the procedural matter is section two, two thousand two of ordinance number two thousand seventeen zero zero three, subsection G two I I, uh, which states adding of items to the agenda during the meeting is disfavored where there is a showing of emergency or extraordinary circumstances exist, not and may be added to the agenda when it is adopted during the meeting by four affirmative votes. A motion shall be properly made and must carry to add each item to the agenda on the day of the meeting. That item shall appear on the post agenda under the added during the meeting headline.
Chair does not find this to be an item of emergency.
Um, questions?
Yeah.
Um, I find this to be an emergency because it is a city, we don't have a city manager.
I'm gonna read that again.
We don't have a city manager.
Chair finds it not to be of an emergency nature, Mr. Clerk, next.
Um, I have a motion.
You have a motion?
Yes. I have a motion to amend the agenda to include a memorandum of agreement between the city of South Fulton and Fulton County to allow me to have keys to Krill Park so that we can have a staff person in the building, which is not asked after ten years, and someone to lock up the park at night, which has not been locked up for ten years.
Counsel, I do not find it to be of emergency nature. Next, Mr. Clerk.
I make the motion to accept the agenda as presented by the clerk.
Is there a second? If there's not a second, we go home. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Properly move the second. All those in favor say aye.
Go ahead. My park, Krill Park, is the only park in the last two years that has had two dead bodies found in it. And, um, I don't know, I think that's an emergency, but I, I respect the chair's decision if they do not think it is.
In further discussion, all those in favor, aye. Raise your hand.
One, two, three, four, to approve the agenda. Approve the regular agenda.
That passes, Mr. Clerk.
Correct, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Speakers will be granted up to two days each, and public comment will not exceed thirty days. You will not be allowed to view or donate time to other speakers. Mister Mayor or members of council, we have received five speaker cards. If the first three speakers please approach the podium at this time, Mr. Reginald Taylor, Miss Linda Pritchett, and Miss Glenda Collins.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Reginald Taylor and I live in District One, and I'm here to address my concerns about crime. South Fulton County is awfully chanted with crime. And I know many of you already said, you know, we don't want to talk about crime in South County because it'll give us a negative connotation. But Channel Two News, Channel Five, Forty Six, and all other channels, they talk about crime in South County every day. And I think it's time for us to start talking about crime in the form of a crime campaign. We need to let South Fulton know what we are doing about crime. And as I sit and listen to you all discussing about the park and everything, and I just wonder, you know, we're not talking about education at all. Education is a key factor in which we go. And if you all don't believe education is a factor, don't address education. I think this council should, should really apply a lot of pressure on Fulton County School Board along with the citizens to improve our education in South County. Ninety-five percent of our schools in, in South County is operating on a forty percent gap. Sixty-fourty gap. That's a huge gap when it comes down to students. And old A.C. Healy Elementary School, where the school board meets, the CCPR index score is forty-seven point three. That's where the school board meets. Something's gonna have to be dealt with, something's been done about that. And I, and I encourage you all to do this. Whoever we hire for a police chief, we need our police chief to be bad. I'm talking about real bad. We do not need a police chief that's well-known. We need a police chief to, to, to get on the news along with our mayor, to face our, our, our city and, and tell the people, well, we're not gonna tolerate. But let me tell y'all something. Anytime the criminal is bader than the police department, something wrong.
Amen.
We can't have that, y'all. We need a bad police chief. But we want that chief to be bad. And whoever we hire for our county manager, we don't want that person that catered to a few, few cows of milk. We want that person to have the insight to be able to strike a balance with the entire county. Because that would bring on a lot of confusion, and we need that person also to have a good understanding of city government and lead us in the right direction, alright? Can I count on y'all?
Okay.
Alright, yeah. Okay.
My name is Linda Pritchett Fleming, and I live in District Seven. I'm here to address an ugly issue of shopping carts that have been stolen from the Kroger on Old National Highway. Citizens are rigging these shopping carts, they're breaking them, they are walking them across the street on Old National to the bus stop in front of Dunkin' Donuts. We have city employees, I believe, that should be responsible for stopping this, for cleaning these up, and these are issues that we honestly need to consider if we're gonna be taken seriously in relation to any form of economic development. This is not a matter of whose district this is in, it's a matter of employees that we pay tax dollars for that are not working. These are the reasons we became the city, because we had a laissez-faire attitude towards delivery of municipal services. Many people fought hard to keep that Kroger open, yet it is deplorable to have six shopping carts sitting in front of Kroger making South Fulton look like a ghetto. I live here, I see this every day. I'm sure that code enforcement sees it every day. But when I'm running for office, code enforcement wants to spend more time worrying about how to take my signs than know how to take dumb shopping carts off of that bus stop. The police has to do something about it, because these are thefts, and we look like a ghetto. I would like to ask for your cooperation and support to develop a plan to deal with this issue. Thank you.
Followed by Miss Glenda Collins, the last two speakers are Mr. Darlin Bryant and Miss Beverly Young. Please approach the podium.
Glenda Collins, District Five, Morning Creek Drive, Fairwood Homeowners Association. Last night I attended the Fulton County Transit Master Plan. And in this presentation, everything sounded as if it was, had dropped in from heaven. We were being forced to pay anywhere from a half to a fourth cent in tax revenue to fund this program. And it was my understanding from the meeting that North Fulton would get two-thirds, South Fulton would get one-third. MARTA will not be included. However, there will be several types of buses going to the MARTA station, because you cannot get north by not getting on the train, and you can't get south by not getting on the train. My problem with that is MARTA is funded by splashed City of Atlanta. But the problem that has not been addressed, and we have not been real about it. Also, the CID says that they will have a process to use, uh, public transportation. Now, you are going to increase many people, thousands of people, onto MARTA. And I have had a bad experience with MARTA in the last three months. There are rats at the train station. People relieve themselves in the seats, and you need to look before you sit down.
Thank you.
And it's sad that people from out of the state come and ride the train to and from MARTA.
Darlin Bryant, District Five. I was gonna mention that, uh, I think we need a, a city manager. Didn't sound like everybody, like one was hiding up behind there, but then, now it sounds like we all have a city manager coming. But we need a city manager who probably can take care of some of the things I was gonna be talking about. I sent, um, uh, I sent an email to the whole board, and the only one that went through was mayors. I don't know, so y'all might want to look into that. Uh, and this was, it was on a Brenner Center for Justice report document was, uh, brought, produced. Uh, as a city, you're able to bypass state elected officials, the state elected officials, and put your own voter registration plans in place, whatever, however you want to do it. Uh, they have, in Virginia, they have verified, they have online registration at, at Fulton County, management in Wisconsin, and East Lansing, Michigan. Landlords are required to hand out, uh, registration, uh, forms to their tenants. Uh, Phoenix, they have, uh, they have an effort to have everybody in the city vote, uh, register, and that way they can all get mailed out ballots. Um, Michigan has a opportunity for the students, high school students, to register and to pre-register, so as soon as they're done, once they turn eighteen, they're already registered. And we have a ten percent cent voting registration. If you call your senators now, the first thing before they respond to you on the phone, they're gonna see how your voting record is. Now, if other cities are checking on this city, or companies are coming here and looking at this voting record and say, ain't nobody there, and you don't have nobody in the city, you got ten thousand people, because the other ninety thousand don't vote. So we need to address the voting issue, uh, 'cause it's dismal and it's embarrassing. Uh, but again, again, we do need a city manager. And, um, where's the garbage pickup? I lost all my credibility in my neighborhood, 'cause I told them we had garbage pickup on the way.
I might want to say, I hope, good night, but, uh, Happy New Year to all the council members and things. My name is Beverly Young, I'm in District Seven. Um, my question is, do we have to get a bungee trash pickup or what city trash company we are going with? Uh, so when will the trash company come on board? And that's my question. And, um, you ride down Flat Shores, someone has dumped almost a hundred bags at a, at a, at a, at a company that's closed up, but you can see it on the side. So that's my question, when did the, um, trash people come in, so we could be all on one accord, even down to the ones that are not paying their trash fees? Thank you.
No further speakers.
Okay, thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. Uh, Mr. Clerk, next item.
First item is a resolution, two thousand seventeen dash zero sixty-one. This item is held on October tenth, twenty seventeen, a resolution of the city of South Fulton, Georgia, executing a cooperation agreement between the city and the South Fulton Community Improvement District, and to provide an effective date.
If I'm not mistaken, I think we decided that we wanted to give them more information from the CID, and CID agreed, and so, uh, I adjourn the motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we hold it until such time as we receive that information, have time to digest it, and then deal with it.
Would you mind saying, make it to the next meeting, maybe even specific, make sure they get it to you.
To the next week.
I second. Okay. Properly move the second. Uh, and there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Alright, that's unanimous. Next, or aye, Mr. Clerk?
Under ordinance is for second reading, this ordinance is sponsored by Councilmember Ralph, and ordinance to establish regulations for hotels, motels, and extended stay hotels to provide for separability or repeal conflicting ordinances to provide effective date and for other purposes.
I move to, um, adopt ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero zero one, ordinance to establish regulations for hotels, motels, and extended stay.
Second.
Properly move the second, any further discussion? Uh, Councilwoman Gomes.
Does, does this apply to any businesses, um, or contractors that come to the city out specifically addressing in section five dash six zero zero four? Are there any exceptions for businesses, or, you know, sometimes businesses come in and, you know, work on a project?
Well, yeah, there's already exclusion provision. If you look in section... Hold me, Mr. Bill, I know it was in here, 'cause it speaks to if you're on a project, um, specifically, I know that was in here. Oh, right, oh, right here. Um, section five dash six zero zero three B two, um, this subsection does not apply to, yes, of extended stay hotel if it's affiliated with a specific business entity that desires such occupation for employer-related purposes.
Okay.
So that's on page sixty-one of our package.
Any further discussion? I'll adjourn the motion. Okay, so properly move the second, discussion, further discussion. All those in favor, aye. That passes unanimously, Mr. Clerk.
The next item for first reading is an ordinance sponsored by Councilmember Willis, offenses by those owning or controlling vehicles. This is an amendment to ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash zero eighteen, and then ordinance number is two thousand eighteen dash zero zero two.
Mr. Mayor, um, I would like to, um, I, I move to pull this ordinance off of the agenda because it's already incorporated in ordinance, um, number two eighteen zero zero three, and, um, it would not serve as an amendment also because we haven't passed that ordinance. But, uh, to my understanding and legal going on, this, this ordinance is incorporated in the next ordinance, we're about to do a first reading.
Uh, yes, we got direction from Councilwoman Willis that the provision that is contemplated in this amendment would apply to the truck routes only. It had been originally drafted to apply to, uh, all provisions of the rules of the road. Um, because it is limited to the truck route ordinance, it would not be an amendment, and it is incorporated in the same language in the upcoming, uh, ordinance.
Madam Counsel, would you make a motion?
I did make a motion, I just didn't say it.
I'm gonna take a second. Second. Probably move the second, I think the motion is to remove it from the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Alright. This is the first reading, this motion is to remove it from the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. That passes unanimously, Mr. Clerk.
The next ordinance is for first reading is, well, that's co-sponsored by Councilmember Ralph, Councilmember Willis, and Councilmember Jackson. This is an ordinance to establish the city of South Fulton Truck Routes Ordinance as Chapter Two of Title Eight of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances, the ordinance number is two thousand eighteen dash zero zero three.
Mr. Mayor, this, um, ordinance has been a lengthy process. I want to thank my colleagues, Ralph and Jackson, for, uh, co-sponsoring this ordinance with me. It's been a long process. What we found is that, uh, most of the truck routes that are in the city of South Fulton have not been updated since nineteen ninety-nine. And so the reason we have a lot of the commercial trucks roaming through our communities is because, yet, we do have signs posted that they are not allowed on our streets, but there were no legal restrictions on these streets. A lot of the communities did not exist, um, prior, I mean, did not exist in nineteen ninety-nine, residential communities that now exist. So what we did was, there were a lot of stakeholders that, internal stakeholders, that we had to pull together. We had to pull together Public Works, Fulton County Police Department, um, GDOT, we had to give feedback on planning, and we had to look at the, uh, residential streets throughout the entire city. Um, and so, uh, it was a lengthy process, we are here. There is a financial impact to this, uh, that was sent to council. We are going to, once this ordinance is, uh, approved, uh, we are going to have to, um, take into account how much it's gonna cost to put up the signs, um, showing the, um, the restriction signs throughout the city of South Fulton, and I think that financial impact was about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, this has been a, uh, problem for the residents of the city of South Fulton, a long, they have been long, um, awaiting this ordinance. Um, it's here, I will encourage our residents to look at the new restrictions. Um, not only will the drivers be cited if they violate the rules of our road, but, uh, with this ordinance, the companies can also be cited as well. Um, so that is all I have to say unless Ralph or anybody else has anything to say.
I have one thing to say, all of our streets are in it. Every street that is not a state road is in this ordinance. So through any community, no eighteen wheels.
Any further comments? I'm gonna stand up. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Mr. Clerk, next.
Okay, also for first reading, a, an ordinance sponsored by Councilmember Jackson, ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero zero four, and ordinance to create Title Eleven of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances to establish offenses related to criminal street gangs to provide for authority to combat the growth and activity of criminal street gangs and for other purposes.
And basically, it speaks for itself, um, we're just trying to get our property and our community back in order. So we are putting the street gang ordinance together, and hopefully it will be dealt with by our police department. And when our chief comes, we're gonna be ready.
Uh, anyway, any further discussion? I have one, one issue. I have a couple of issues. Uh, how is this, counsel? How is this ordinance related to the second one here that comes after it? And could it possibly be incorporated with, with that?
Uh, yes, Mayor, could, um, it is, uh, there's a section that should be reserved in the criminal ordinance form, uh, Councilman Jackson's ordinance. It was the intent for, for those to be reconciled, uh, after they were both duly adopted. I will note, uh, and this, this was, uh, uh, this was not caught in the, in the draft. Uh, when those are reconciled, legal would ask for an amendment, uh, to the numbering of, uh, of this particular ordinance, and that could be entertained tonight, to change the numbering from, uh, Title Eleven, Chapter Two, to Title Fifteen, Chapter Six, to comply with, uh, to comply with the criminal ordinance.
So this is, to answer my question, uh, Jeff, come in a minute.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
What I'm trying to see is that, uh, if in fact it's a great deal that Mr. Jackson is doing, but, uh, would it be better to incorporate it in one ordinance and in the fact that what you do in criminal cases, that you don't have to work up front all over the place to find where an act should be found?
Yes, having everything just together in one criminal code, all the crimes, and I think that we can continue the section numbering.
And I think he did say he was going to do that.
And, and that was, that was legal's, uh, issue in, in the draft that we originally provided to Councilwoman. Uh, we had originally looked at, at placing the criminal code in Title Eleven, uh, after we were considering the entire title, made more sense to put it in fifteen in, uh, this particular draft, uh, was not updated to reflect that. But there is, there is a reserved section for this particular ordinance in the criminal ordinance, so that it'll all line up.
Well, does this make what I'm reading here moot?
No, it, it does not. It does not make the ordinance moot.
Okay, alright, second. Thank you. Yeah.
You try and know. I'm here.
Okay. Uh, next, please. Next. I'm sorry.
Um, in the ordinance, under, this is a, this is a legal question, in section eleven dash two thousand three, uh, is the definition, two thousand three B, uh, the definition of a criminal street gang means any organization, association, common, or group of three or more persons associated in fact, and... And my, my question is, does this give the authority to label, does this give an arresting officer the authority to label any group of three or more young men together as a gang? And, and how is that determination made?
I, I totally understand your, your question, Councilman. This, this ordinance also would depend on their conduct in addition to their association. One thing that we are somewhat hamstrung by with this particular code section is Georgia law, Georgia statutes actually lay out the language that municipalities can adopt in adopting this, and that's something that we worked with, with Councilwoman Jackson on, and, and it was to make sure that the language in this ordinance tracks exactly what is permitted in, in Georgia law. So to answer your question, one, it depends on conduct, but two, we are somewhat limited if the city decides to adopt this ordinance in, in amending any of the language because it is specifically laid out by statute.
I agree with you. It's subjective. And every time you have something subjective, it's not clearly laid out, you know, people must say, well, you know, this is the way I interpret things, all right? And you wind up getting somebody hurt over nothing because someone made subjective moves. So I, that bothers me, and you're saying that the, that the state lays it out as to what is, I wonder how many police know what the state is laying out.
And so I have a follow-up question, because I, I have a follow-up question, because I've worked with young people, and sometimes there, there are fights in schools, and all of them are labeled as being in a gang, which gives them enhanced sentencing. And so my question is, what is the legal recourse for a young person that gets labeled as a gang member that is not a gang member? Is there some, in somewhere else in the process, do they have the ability to, to defend themselves against that charge?
So there would, there would be. Unfortunately, that, that portion of the process actually comes after the arrests occur. So if, if an arresting officer were to arrest subject to this code section, which also requires certain activities in order to, in order to, in order for someone to be guilty under this code section, if you look at two thousand three, Section eleven dash two thousand three, it lays out some of the, or it lays out the, the activities that are labeled as criminal gang activity. And so if, if the arraignment, there would be a possibility for someone to make the case that they were improperly arrested under this statute, or there again, at any step forward in the criminal proceeding. If someone is arrested, however, under this statute, it would not be until the arraignment that they would be able to, to challenge the, I guess it would be indictment at that point.
Thank you. Okay. I think I saw it. Your yard.
Is there a legal definition of a gang anywhere?
So this, what's before you?
Outside of, outside of the three people that could be considered in a gang.
In the state of Georgia, no, ma'am.
So is there any reason why you couldn't come up with a definition for one? Or does it have to be a state law to create that definition?
So in, and I might have my history incorrect here, but, but if recollection serves correctly, when Georgia initially enacted a criminal, and Brian, you might be able to speak this too, but when Georgia originally enacted a criminal street gang law, it was struck down as unconstitutional. And so they went back and rewrote it in order to make it constitutional, because it did impede, to your, to your point of concern, Councilwoman, on the freedom of association that individuals have. And so that's why this particular code section tracks the language of the statute, because this statute has not been found to be unconstitutional.
And does this not mimic North Cross?
It's, it's exactly what, what other cities have adopted, including the City of North Cross.
I was gonna say that, yes, there are gang statutes, state, on a state level, and, you know, I commend Ms. Jackson for trying to do something acknowledging, something we have not acknowledged in a very long time, that yes, City of South Fulton does have a gang problem. And the first thing to do to solve it is to acknowledge it. So it's metrowide, but we do have a problem here in City of South Fulton. And so I do think some type of ordinance is necessary, but what I would like to suggest, and I know this is, you're saying North Cross has it, but if there's any way that you can maybe cross-reference with our, and I know you said you have that state statute, but maybe you talk with our community prosecutor, our district attorney's office, and just, you know, have them live with the ordinance. This is just a suggestion, you don't have to.
So just to clarify that point, Councilwoman, this, and I may not have been clear earlier, but this, the language in this is, is verbatim to the state statute.
Okay, okay.
Okay, good. All right. Ms. Jackson?
I apologize, you got one more ordinance. This is co-sponsored by Councilmember Ral and Councilmember Dunn, is that their ordinance, two thousand eighteen dash zero zero five for first reading, an ordinance to create Title Fifteen of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances, Criminal offenses to establish general offenses, offenses related to property rights, offenses related to public peace and order, offenses related to loitering, offenses related to criminal gangs, to establish penalties and for other purposes.
My name is on this particular ordinance, it really takes in some recommendations based on what has, our court has seen, so suggestions, but it does add some additional sections that, so I took in consideration some of the feedback we got. I want to note to make a couple of changes, particularly on page ninety-eight, Item D, the second paragraph, I think we can strike that particular section because I think this is addressed adequately on page ninety-six, under Section fifteen dash one, zero zero one. So I think it's redundant. And then one other thing I think that should be noted is, under Section fifteen two zero zero five, that we had putting signage in the right of way, not just affixed to poles and trees, when it comes back for a second reading.
Forgive me, Councilwoman, where was the sub-paragraph D?
Sub-paragraph D is on page ninety-eight, the second, it's actually E, letter E.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And then on page one oh two, Section fifteen dash two zero zero five, that we include signage in the right of way, because I don't know, we've seen that uptick here lately, I don't know where that came from, but we're gonna get that straight. And then, just to remind, some of this stuff wasn't placed under Fulton County, but this is an attempt to do the whole title and bring it together in one place. So just wanted to emphasize that. And then I think on page one twenty-six, it goes back to the changing in the title. I think it's supposed to be Section fifteen dash six zero zero three, under Section B and C.
Okay, I acknowledge Councilwoman Dunn and Councilwoman Lee.
So last week, we saw a criminal code from the solicitor. This is a different code, this replaces that code. What happened to the, is that code, are we still considering that one as well?
No, the solicitor gave some recommendations, which we're taking into account in this particular ordinance, but it's our role to set policy. And so I definitely did look at what she presented, and it is incorporated in this particular ordinance.
And in the, and I'm sorry, in the court, you all have reviewed this?
We have, we have reviewed it. There's a couple of changes, I was speaking to council. Both Ms. Jones and I reviewed this particular ordinance, and there are two changes that we just want to suggest to the council. The first one is in the penalty section, Section fifteen, one thousand one, which is page ninety-six of your packet, where it says that the, the penalty shall not exceed a thousand dollars in or imprisonment for a hundred eighty days. Actually, the state statute allows penalties for misdemeanors up to twelve months, and I just would ask that we be in line with the state statute, that we not kind of serve us kind of out of balance. The second relates to the shoplifting, a similar thing, I'm trying to find the.
Can you say the number?
That's what I, I'm, I'm sorry, I was actually looking for it. I reviewed it, oh, on my page one oh six, Section fifteen dash two thousand seven, that by shoplifting, it says that the value is a hundred dollars or less. I believe council took a look at it today, you said it was five hundred. So what hap-
Five hundred is a state statute.
Okay, so under the state statute, a misdemeanor is five hundred dollars or less, not one hundred dollars. What we don't want to do is create a criminal code that creates a gap, so that we have a hundred dollars and less. The State Court of Fulton County has one hundred dollars and one penny to five hundred dollars, and then the Superior Court has five hundred dollars and more. So we just want to consolidate that, make the right line, five hundred dollars, it'll help the court, it'll help the officers. It just will make things clear-cut, if it's five hundred dollars or more, it's Superior Court issue, it's considered a felony under the statute. If it's five hundred dollars or less, it's a misdemeanor, and we can handle it in the next court.
I accept these changes, and this is the first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you for that. And I, and I just wanted to close with this, it is never, I don't want to advocate my responsibility as a policymaker to write legislation, but I think when we're dealing with things like criminal law, as none of us up here have been criminal lawyers, if you all have written something, I think that we should, we should just, we're, I think we should use what you have written. And it would be the same in any other legal document.
Thank you.
I may not agree with these changes, of course, those recommendations didn't have these other sections when we first saw, so in the second read, because this is just the first, incorporate the changes, even the ones I spelled out in the next version.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dunn?
Jeff Sellis, are you able to make sure that the fines and fees are aligned with, are aligned with this particular ordinance by the next second read? Because that was my concern, is that they were fluctuating in fees and wasn't contingency. Are you saying that you've already done the full analysis?
No. Okay, so I, I, because policymaking is solely your discretion, if you cap a fine at something, you cap the fine at it. It is fine, we, we will adjust our systems accordingly. What I, what I was speaking of is in the penalties in general section, that the council not, not limit the jurisdiction lower than what the state statute has already said that the jurisdiction is, when you're saying penalties in general, because some things, you're not spelling out exactly what you want first offense, second offense, third offense to be.
So those are the only two that you?
Correct, those are, those are the only two that I, I mean, what I did, and I'll be candid, I, I, again, I leave policymaking to policymakers, I just went through and made sure that we were not out of line with the state statute. So in other words, the theft by shoplifting statute, I believe, is OCGA sixteen eight fourteen, if I'm not mistaken, I'm trying to remember all of them, sixteen eight fourteen is a shoplifting statute. It spells out exactly what's a misdemeanor and what's a felony. So when I'm reviewing the statute, I'm just reviewing for compliance, I'm not reviewing for any sort of discretion that the council may have, I'm just making sure that we are in line with what the state says.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll get these incorporated in the next version, so it doesn't even have to be an amendment right, it could be incorporated in the second draft.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Jackson? I'm sorry, next hand.
I have to review that before, to add the amendment to the ordinance, the loitering, related to loitering for other purposes. And what it's actually saying, it's like located in front of your convenience stores, in front of your stores, that type of thing, and that's what we're having now in the City of South Fulton. We're having a lot of problems with, well, teenagers or adults or whatever, and we have had some, a lot of drug activity. And what we are trying to do now is curtail that with some type of loitering ordinance in our district. So I think Major Rogers is here, I don't know if you can actually want her to speak, but they have had, they've done a couple of, a lot of.
Oh, I mean, it's not one of the, I don't want Major Rogers to speak, because council wants Major Rogers.
Would you all like Major Rogers to speak to the problems that they have found in one area? Didn't she say?
I have a question.
First of all, what was your request?
Mayor Roger, not Mayor Rogers, what's his name, Major Rogers. Basically, we had some problems about loitering at the store, one of our stores in our community, and there was, once our police was notified about that, there was a major bust done in that area. But it's a lot of loitering going on in specific areas.
I hate it.
Excuse me?
You call where you work.
Can you speak to that, ma'am? Thank you.
Good evening, Council, are you referring to a Rob Gaby? Okay, previously, there was an issue with drugs, and once the police went out, they were able to make a big drug bust at the corner store at Gaby Place and Gaby Road. That corner store is on Fulton County Police. The complaints were that it was a number of people constantly loitering and not conducting the usual business of a convenience store. There are cameras at the store, but of course, we didn't have access to it, but once it was brought to our attention, we did have an officer go by, and he was able to make an arrest at that particular location.
And this is what I was wanting to add right now, until we can, because I was actually wanting to sign, but I was told that we could not add that right now. The signage, you know, their convenience stores would have the signage, and we couldn't, that's the Fulton County law.
So currently, under the Fulton ordinances that the city council has adopted, there is a requirement that stores have, or take mitigating steps to, to prevent loitering, which includes a no-loitering sign. Those are included under the, the business licensing title in Fulton County, and something that the mayor has requested that we, we draft and introduce to council, so we'll be able to include those recommendations with that, with that title draft.
Because, because the judge has to also, that sign, if there were the no-loitering, has to have the Georgia code.
It does, it has to have the statute, yes, yes, sir.
But it's, it's, it's a danger.
Sure. As he said, that we didn't have no money, I think that's something, does it say, do we provide that, or do the, does the owner of the business pay for that?
The owner would provide it.
They will pay for it, just.
Thank you.
So you mentioned business licenses, because I have a gas station ordinance that's in process, and I was told that I needed to wait until we move forward with the business licenses, code. So when are we gonna move forward with that, so that we can get all of this addressed?
We, so currently, the city is operating under the Fulton County Business Licensing Code. I believe it's, it's within the next couple ordinance, ordinance titles that we are, we're bringing to the council. And what we discussed in terms of the city's five priorities, we obviously wanted to address that first, address issues that were with the transition, including police and, and emergency management, but I believe licensing is actually the next title after police.
Okay. This reminds me, you know, last time we were talking about this issue, I asked you all to go back and look at the box seal ordinance. Have we- Have we, have we incorporated, you know, is Daddy Cook incorporated here?
Just to clarify in regard, um, Jax's amendment, it just clarified for me. It looks like the, the only thing that is different, correct me if I'm wrong, is that section fifteen dash four zero zero one, which is the definition. Is that true? Because everything else looks pretty much the same. I'm just trying to distinguish what's different. Do you recall?
That, that is the, that is the largest difference, including, uh, there's also included a violation section, uh, in fifteen dash, uh, four thousand four.
Right.
Uh, that allows for the maximum penalty of a misdemeanor, uh, under that section.
Would you, that would, I think, kind of compass with the judge saying, making sure we're consistent with state laws, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment? Okay, Mr. Clerk? All right, the next item under other reports is CFO Frank Malasi, City Contracts.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. Uh, our aim was to bring together the contracts since inception of the city. Some of just the agreements, so we are still putting them together because some of them have not yet been signed. So we are giving them to, um, authorities that can sign and they can be available to the court so that we are as transparent as possible. People can see what agreements we have. So soon the signing of those contracts that have not been signed are completed, they will be getting brought forward to you for your review and be available to the public.
These are contracts that have been approved by, by the council, yes, or yeah?
Yes, there are some, uh, contracts, agreements, we can say agreements, especially at the beginning of the year, uh, on a startup, that the agreements were made, actually, they were not in real contracts, but those ones have to be signed so that at least they...
So, let me say it again. Are these contracts, meaning they have not been approved by this council?
That's correct. Services are being provided, but they have not been approved by the council.
Okay, okay.
When do you anticipate that we will be able to see something?
The next meeting, everything will be available.
Okay, so, uh, February thirteenth.
Correct. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Malasi, Mr. Clerk, if I want a financial report.
And, correct.
This will be an update of what we presented before, but at the same time, to know how far we are with the, our expenses. Especially the biggest expense that we are having is the payment to Fulton County. And that's to do with the IGA for the services the county is providing to the city. This is a summary of the services that the county is providing to the city and as from October twenty seventeen. This is the amount that we pay on monthly that you will see at the bottom of the page, four million seven hundred thirty-nine thousand one forty-nine. We pay that on monthly basis and the distribution of those expenses are as you see there. Anything that is in green, those departments have already been transitioned to the city. On the second page. Here's the summary of what we have been paying since, uh, on the left side, you see some invoice. From May, you will see that the invoice is getting smaller and smaller as we get those departments coming to the city. We started with the five point two million a month and now we are at four point seven million a month. We still have got the two depart- major departments. That's the fire, which is beginning next month, February twenty-sixth, and then police will follow in March. From October through December, these are the expenses that we have incurred. October, the monthly payment was a four point seven million dollars. We only managed to pay two million dollars because we did not have enough money. As you know, that the tax bearing and correction was delayed. So we only managed to pay two million dollars, two million dollars with a balance of two point seven million. In November, we did not pay. This was an arrangement with the Fulton County that we're going to pay, uh, pending on our receiving the tax. December, four point seven, we paid four million dollars with a balance of seven, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand one forty-nine. And a total of invoice, this is an invoice before reconciliation, a total of fourteen million two hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-six. Out of that, we paid six million dollars that we sent money to the county. We had a balance of eight million two hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-six forty. When we wait for reconciliation last Friday, out of that fourteen million dollars that you see, uh, on the left-hand side, go forward. Ten million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred, uh, five hundred and seventy-eight. From fourteen, it came to ten million after reconciliation. And we paid six million, but Fulton County paid on our behalf. They corrected the revenue on our behalf. That was three hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and forty-eight and ninety-six cents. With that, from six hundred and six million, with what they corrected, in total, we paid Fulton County six million three hundred and thirty-two, four forty-two. And if you subtract that from the ten million actual expenses, we have a balance of four million one forty-eight, three twenty-nine as of December thirty-first. That's the outstanding, that amount we have to pay Fulton County according to the agreement by end of January. Yes, ma'am?
Cover thing number one, I wanted to always understand that, uh, he said we didn't have money, that we had some tax collected. You know, we had freeze on the taxes, so we had no tax collected to give, uh, for the council. I want to make sure that sometimes we did very different definition of words. The second thing is, uh... Frank, I was in on the finance meeting and I'm not saying that anybody doing anything wrong to us yet. But we have to verify. I made this comment. I'm telling you, I talked to him about, we have to verify. I'm not going to sit in a meeting with somebody that owe money and they're going to tell me how much money I took off you and to pay me, pay myself, and don't give me a documentation. I have a problem with that. And so, and they may be totally right. I'll get you. They may be totally right. I'm not one of these numerous people. They may be totally right. But if you get, if I got forty people in, in, uh, in fire department that I have not filled those forty vacancies and then you as Fulton County go and tell me that, well, those forty vacancies come up to X amount of dollars. I'm not saying you wrong, but I got this old philosophy is that trust your friends but tie your camera. All right, got to verify it. And I, and I'm asking you all in the, in the finance department, that make, make it known that these numbers are clearly verifiable. And I've asked that you all, that whatever your book, their book say, our books say the same thing. Now, that's four million dollars. My colleague left, said, hey, ain't too bad yet. Yeah, fuck, I know, could be two million. And when I got to, I got to know what you're talking about. And so I might, my charge to you guys is to go back, talk with Fulton County, see what they have done and verify the numbers. That's what I'm asking.
Mayor, I think we were together, you were with us there. Before we went there, they sent us documentation of how they have spent it. And while we are there, they gave us the revenue that they have received and the expenses they have spent, all departments. So we have the expenditures that they have.
Well, you need to, you need to let us know that because I didn't get that. You know, I got, I, I was being talked to by people in Fulton County about what they're doing, how much money they're saving us. And I don't know if they saving us too much, too little, or whatever the case may be. I just want, if you got some clearly verifiable, it needs to be in this report that we're getting tonight so we can all see, you know, what it is that they're giving us credit for. That's all I'm saying. I'm, I think you're doing a great job in terms of what you're doing, but we just need to be verified. Well, I am a numerous person. And so from the beginning, from August, I have been asking for, as you know, where's the documentation? And you can tell me that I owe you a million dollars? But the way I see it, I owe you nothing till you prove it. And putting a million dollars on a piece of paper proves nothing. So I continue to go back to Article One of the IGA that states both parties are supposed to provide documentation when requesting it. So really, what's happening is that, this, and I'm not speaking for you, but I, I do know this. Mr. Malasi is asking for it and Fulton County is doing exactly what they have been doing, giving numbers and not giving any support. So maybe if we don't pay them until they give us the support, they might get the message. Or maybe if something else happens, they might get the message. Because we've been going around and around on this over and over and over again. And so, um, it needs to change. It really needs to change. Because we don't have any support for any of this. These are numbers on the page, right? That's all.
I agree with you because I think we worked last week, uh, on agencies. The most expensive that we have as of now, when the partners transition here, they will have expenses. But the agents that they charge us, twelve million dollars, that's what we are paying for nine agency. And those nine agents, we'll take, for example, police is five million dollars. Up to now, explain what's the makeup of this five million dollars. And they will not because they say we, it's in agreement, it's in IG agreement that you are going to pay by budget. Yes, it is the budget, but give us the details as it has been throughout our legal council. We go with them. And as you know, last week, we were with Joshua's there. They have not forthcoming to give up the details. So if you have any other way there, let's work together, but you...
Well, I kind of like not paying. Now, we have another real deal.
There are other...
We need to, uh, uh, look what David Dove and y'all, we need to really look into this. It's got to be fair and equitable.
So until we finish the transition, we'll still have, or else we take some actions as the, the review can take some actions. Let's go.
So I guess we, the proposed audit that was discussed at the last meeting, I guess we can't do any of that until, are they going to not help us? Like, what is the status of the proposed audit?
The proposed audit will, will start sometime in February. That's not, the county is asked to see our books. The county refused to do the audit. They would do it wherever they will, but they, as we requested last year, you remember we questioned here last year? They said they are going to do the audit as they do, but not under our request. So the audit I was talking last year is asked for our books here from May through September. It's a requirement we have to perform an audit, not for the county. County, we have no control.
Okay, are you...
I think these, you know, issues we can talk about in the future. But one of the things I had a question about was, um, revenue. So, um, I know we are, the collections weren't due to January fifteenth. I, I, we have to read this monitor too. January fifteenth, can you talk a little bit about where we are? And, and even if the money hasn't transferred over, I'm sure you have some kind of idea what the revenues are looking like in terms of collection on property tax.
Taxes are coming like today. They all, um, we have been receiving, maybe at one time they will ask us to go and pick about three million dollars. That's why you see much of it will be in end of January. As you see, it was late, so they have come in early January, but January will have a good reporting.
So, so three hundred is due December. Uh, that, what is that through, three billion and nine?
No, one time they will ask us to go and get three million. Sometimes I'm just...
Oh, they wait till it collects something, three million, and then you go pick.
Right. They don't ask us to, to, to pick at one time. As money comes in, they will ask us to go and pick. Today, they send us to go and pick up, uh, to take, uh, three point nine billion dollars tomorrow.
Okay, which, that's good because that's...
Yeah, right, there's time.
Okay, thank you.
And for your information, again, we have just received, yesterday, we just received our first franchise, six hundred and nine thousand from Creston. But it will be in January, uh, reporting.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, um, I have two questions. Well, I have a question before my question. Are, are we in the city manager's report section of the, the agenda?
That's it. That's the area where you are, yes.
Right, as we just kind of don't call it that. Right, right, right. We don't have one. Um, my first question is, how many employees do we have now?
It's about, um, sixty-three employees. And it will be as many as we can with the fire coming February.
Right. And then my next question is, I, I know that a lot of these negotiations, well, according to our IGA, these negotiations, um, are supposed to be conducted with our city manager. And as many people have, um, expressed concern in our local community, we haven't had a city manager for three months. And so I am wondering, do we have a, a date where we might have a city manager? Do we have estimated timeline where we might have a city manager?
That's, I can't answer. That's for the...
That was a executive session item and we'll, we'll first meet you later on. That was executive session, uh, coming to...
I mean, so, so I'm asking in, in a public meeting, are we, I can't talk about an executive session conversation in a public meeting. So I will talk to you about it, but, yeah, I just can't talk to you about it. Um, is there, is there, let me ask the question a different way. Will we ever, when might we announce to our constituents a timeline for when we might have a city manager? Do we have a timeline to announce a time?
I, I don't know with that question. Okay, I'm, I'm struggling because it's an executive session conversation and I'm very struggling with it right now. And now you're asking me questions that, uh, would, answered properly, I would violate, you know, but we're close.
I don't, and I don't, and again, I don't want, I don't want anyone to violate executive session. I just think...
It's close.
I would, I would just, I would, I think our constituents would like an answer to that question. So if we can't answer it now...
It's close. I just, I can say it's real close.
All right, it's close. Okay, thank you.
So the last page we'll talk about from January through March, uh, still the same. In March, we're expecting to have the same, a charge of four point seven million dollars. So we paid for January. January, we paid in full. February is still seven, uh, four point seven. All these ones are invoiced. So reconciliation for these ones will be sometime in April. So as of January, February, March, our total will be invoiced will be four million, five hundred and forty-two and fifteen dollars. So far, we have paid, we have paid out in Fulton County, four point seven million dollars with a balance of seven point eight with balance of reconciliation. That's the end of the forty. There's no additional question.
Go ahead, please. Again, don't want to violate executive session or whatever. But, um, is there anything that we can tell our constituents about our sanitation? About our RFP for our citywide sanitation services?
Um, actually, that one, I may answer, but the counsel, who my witness may have... Um, actually, that one, I may answer, but the council, who my religious may also ask, we have scheduled a meeting, there will be a meeting on the twenty-fifth, so that all parties can get into, can have this, that rolling. It's not waiting for the city manager, that one, that much I know. You may have some other things to add, Councilor.
Yes, um, Councilman Lee, I want your feedback. I sent the ordinance to the entire council over a month ago and having the item of your feedback. So, um, the mayor, I mean, I got feedback from some of my colleagues, but I didn't get any feedback from you. So if you have some, please feel free to board it. Over the week, um, there is a meeting that I am having with the stakeholders, um, to include, uh, the mayor and, um, the C, legal and CFO of Public Works-
Our just, our just manager.
And the purchasing manager. But I would love your feedback.
Um, I, I don't have any feedback on the, um, ordinance, but if you are saying that you are the point person for our sanitation R F P, I would like to be included in our sanitation R F P.
I'm not saying I'm the point person, but in order for us, that's part of the process. I'm saying it's a process we have to have for ordinance in place.
And I don't have a concrete ordinance that you'd bring. I just, I, again, I'm, I'm, I'm past the ordinance, I'm fine with it. I just wanted to know if we might get the R F P.
Let me see, I have to help you. Uh, Teresa Adams working here, uh, talking to Mr. Malazi. Uh, she works for you, right? Okay, so the same point person, and I'll be all right with this, would be Mr. Malazi, who is also in concert with Ms. Adams. So I think that would answer the question.
We have a meeting on the twenty-fifth, so all stakeholders will be there to see how it found out, what we can do when-
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Burke, let's get Ms. Adams.
The next item is the police pursuit vehicles presented by the purchasing department, Teresa Adams.
Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and City Council. In preparation of the police department coming over the end of March, the police department will need five new vehicles to replace five of the worst-case vehicles within their fleet. These are, uh, five vehicles that have been targeted as, um, have reached their useful life due to age of use, also mileage, and also need of repairs. Uh, the lead time to receiving these vehicles and also outfitting them are approximately fourteen weeks. Uh, therefore, based on the time constraint, we would need to go ahead and purchase vehicles that's already available on lots through the, uh, state of Georgia contract that they have with Aikens. It's Aikens Ford, Dodge, Jeep, and Chrysler. Uh, so the recommendation tonight is to purchase the Bayou Police Pursuit Vehicles from the statewide contract from Aiken, and to obtain quotes to outfit all five vehicles, uh, to have them in, towards the end of March. The total amount to purchase and outfit will not exceed the budgeted amount of two hundred thousand, and the vehicle should be placed, the order should be replaced no later than this coming Friday.
Okay, so this is kinda like the last meeting where we had, where we were presenting a certain amount, and that in two days, we had to, this is, is this considered emergency funding? I already know that, um, this budgeted four, but you were saying that we didn't have this done by the twenty-sixth, which is three days from now.
All the vehicles, um, that have been targeted to come over from Fulton County will come over. It's just that the conditions of some of the vehicles, we want to make sure that we have already had, um, vehicles available in the pipeline to have them replaced. But no, it's not considered an emergency, but we will also be purchasing through state contracts, so we are following the procurement process.
Okay, so you follow the procurement process.
Yes.
Let me add one thing to this comes. Remember that meeting we had with Enterprise was supposed to be here. Uh, they came well after the, the work session, when we went into our legislative chamber. Well, that was an issue of timing, because if we didn't make a decision that night, Enterprise could not move forward. And so they had no interest in doing that, I can't say. So the money was up there, uh, and we decided that state contract would be the, would be piggybacked on state contract to get five cars.
So this is a contract that we'll piggyback and offer the state.
It's a, it's a contract.
But is it, how much in cars is it?
It's a seven of five. It says five.
It's five.
Five, did you miss that?
I can't even see that yet.
Just for clarity, on this police chart on page one thirty-three, it's seven listings. So is that, these aren't the ones that we're talking about?
It would be five vehicles that would be, uh, purchased?
Just directing something.
Okay. And just for the benefit of other council, I'm sure not just me, who can make these a little bit bigger.
Right.
It's not showing, actually, that's just a line item of the contract. It's not showing a quantity. This is the pricing sheet, uh, that all entities that purchase off the state contract will pay. So you see the line item number, it, uh, it reference the actual vehicle, name and model.
So you didn't produce this?
That's correct, just as part of the state contract, wanted to do, just have all the information that we were purchasing that was available on state contract.
Councilman Baker, didn't council on the way.
I just wanted to know, um, yeah, you could probably answer the point for us. Uh, did we ever receive a proper inventory for vehicles that we actually have that are coming over?
Yes, you're talking about parts. When we talk about police, well, that's a different issue. Uh, no, we have not. And, and the rationale is this, or you might as well know. They're trying to do, one of the things they're trying to do is their own police department on Fulton Industrial Boulevard, which I think is crazy. And they refuse to give us the inventory on those vehicles, because they say they don't know what vehicle they're gonna keep to run seven miles, four hundred residents, seven days a week. When our proposal is, on the day we, I've been with, unincorporated Fulton County, we have always served Fulton Industrial Boulevard, understanding that Fulton Industrial Boulevard will be the only piece of unincorporated left. I simply say, let us get the taxes. Let us continue to serve the Boulevard as we've been doing, even if we got to do a memorandum of understanding. But they, we are, we're, no, we can talk about it. It's time for everybody to get involved with. But these are the kind of things we're having, uh, to deal with every day. So we haven't gotten it, Mr. Baker, because they have that, not decided, I guess, what vehicles they wanna keep.
Well, uh, just for clarity, the last time we received a presentation, uh, from the police department, they overtly notified us that they didn't even have an inventory themselves.
I can't speak to that. I just know that, yeah, yeah. Miss, okay, Miss, Miss Will, Miss Williamson, then Miss Rob.
This is one of our five priorities, and, um, I, I think we need to give our police department what they need. And so I will, that we approve this expenditure for our police department to get the five vehicles they need to help keep the residents of City South Fulton safe.
We'll probably move the second, in further discussion. All goes in favor of I? Yes, you, yes, you, no, it's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Just a question, and this, um, I think, uh, Mr. Malazi, if you can answer this. As we transition these departments, I know one of the things that, uh, I think we've discovered in this process that our, um, asset management under the county may not have been ideal. I'll just say it like that. What are we doing as inventory is brought over, the department is purchasing? How are we accounting for that? Because I don't wanna have this conversation again. We're not gonna have this conversation again. So what are we doing to make sure everything that we purchase, that is documented, and it's, we are?
So we are setting up the inventory system for both, um, fixed asset and just inventory to track whatever we have bought. What the transition does is that, like, fires coming, as you have asked, they are supposed to send us an inventory. We buy everything, they charge us everything that comes from Fulton County. Be it a vehicle, be it a truck, everything we buy, they charge us one dollar. So they'll send us in advance. They'll send us the titles of the vehicle. Then I will take those, uh, titles to get tags, so that they can be ready for us. As we are talking now, they promised us they were going to give us the titles sometime in January. Up to now, until yesterday, yesterday, we still didn't have concrete answers as to when we are running those titles. But yes, we are comparing the assets.
Let me, let me add to that. I sent a, did I also, did I send a memo to Fulton County?
I think last week, last week.
Last week, yes. Sent a memo to Fulton County asking for an inventory of all of the vehicles. When did we purchase them? How did we purchase them is a good question. Funding source is a good question. Because of the fact that some of the vehicles that we had were, were, were purchased out of the S, the old S S D. There's no question about that purchase. But some of the vehicles were grant money, some of the vehicles was called U W A C. And that's money to get from that organization to, to, if you're a regional police department, they'll give you money to, to, to get equipment and things of that nature. So the, the position that Fulton County takes is, if there's any U W A C money in it, then that, that vehicle comes to us simply because U W A C says, we gave it to Fulton County, and Fulton County was designated at that time as a regional police department. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts going on. So I asked, I don't think, I don't think we got you heavy loaded, but I asked for the complete list. How do we buy it? If it's grant, or U W A C funded? So we can just move this thing to the side.
So we were promised that we're going to have that inventory within a week, but we are yet to. So to answer your question, yes, we are putting down the inventory so that we account for each and every item that we get and what we buy.
Uh, Mr. Dove, so there are a number of items that are critical to the transition of the departments that we are moving over. If we continue to get this pushback that we've been getting for months, what legal recourse do we have?
I will say that, uh, that there is certainly legal recourse that the city can take under the, uh, agreement with Fulton County, but I would be hesitant to go into the strategy of that without going into executive session.
Right, it's good enough.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much.
One other thing I would just add. I'm sorry, are we gonna, just quick, um, uh, this is important. I know fire is, um, transitioning over, and I'm excited about fire coming over to our city. Um, is, will there be the opportunity or, for that team of four transition to kind of update us? If you're gonna work this, otherwise?
Good idea, more paper. Good idea, uh, we have a, we have a report, a transition report only for one place right now, and that's Parks and Recreation. And we need to make, and tomorrow, we need to make, I need to make sure that the other two departments give us a transition report update. We, they, Ms. Gill, I've been asking for for some time, and I think we need to produce it. We need to produce it as early as we can, money. All right, next.
Last item is the information technology overview, and that's presented by Information Technology. Namar Stripling.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Namar Stripling, I T Director. I'm excited to be here. Where to get, uh, the transitions over so we can focus on more important things. Uh, this presentation is going to include, uh, the county to city transition readiness, the technology inventory overview, current status, recommendations, and question, questions and answers. So with the transitions, there's several different levels of complexity related to the transition. Primarily, the departments that have already transitioned, they're kind of like a low, uh, part, uh, low complexity, because they were all simply located, everybody's in one building. So everything you needed to do, you didn't have to travel to different locations to get it done. Uh, if you look at the next one, it's the medium complexity, where you have parks and recreation. There, everything within low, with the access to them being centralized, but they also have, uh, wireless connectivity, all these other things that we have to do a part of that. But the ultimate thing is they're remote. They have multiple locations, about ten or so locations, I think seven or so that we have to do connectivity at. Uh, the next one is high, uh, complexity. I categorize the fire department as high. They're also remote, everything is in medium, but they also have a, uh, application migration that we have to do, uh, from the county. And they're also public safety. So for me, that's a very high priority related to that. Uh, the last one is very high. And I put the police in this category of complexity because they have all the previous, uh, complexity levels, but they're in the middle of a application transition to another R M S system, uh, which is going to, I think it's gonna be a slight gap between when they're supposed to transition and the completion of that, of that application. The readiness of the city, right now, we have fire department from the connectivity side. They're about ninety percent ready, uh, to transition on the connectivity side. We're still ongoing conversations related to the applications. Uh, police, they're a hundred percent ready relates to connectivity. We're also doing ongoing communications related to, uh, their applications as well. Parks and Recreation, they're about seventy percent. And there have, they have a project plan related to their completion of their, uh, records management system, which is around April fifteenth, long as nothing goes wrong, and we may be able to accelerate that timeframe. And the city hall is about fifty percent ready, but that does not preclude any of the, uh, departments from moving over. So that's just some backups that we're doing related to, uh, coverage and redundancy. And, but there are applications and hardware that we need to purchase to support the actual, uh, departments coming over. So since I've been, uh, at the city, we've become a member of the multi-state information sharing and analysis, analysis agency. And their ultimate goal is to position state and local governments, their cybersecurity footprint, uh, to try to strengthen that. So basically, what happens is the feds, they send out alerts, events, and things like that. But if we have any of those state members that are having security issues, we get the information and we have a call. So there's a monthly call that we go with different types of things that are happening. And if they see different actors out there, threat actors, they'll send us data to help us protect our boundaries related to that information. Uh, we've looked at standardizing supportive, uh, service requests, technology service requests. So we had an onsite support that, you know, a lot of people doing walk-ups and saying, hey, I need this fixed. What we're trying to do is standardize that process so we can document exactly how many calls we give. So when we look at staffing, we can kind of base it on some actual factual data. Uh, the establishment of contacts with all services. So we have a lot of different services that are supporting and providing services, or technology services to the, to the city. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we look at all of those services, look at opportunities for reducing costs, and making sure that they're operating efficiently, which goes into the next bullet to where we've, with the technology support, we've reduced, uh, the cost about forty percent monthly for the services that the interim technology support was providing to us. As it relates to some of the ongoing efforts that we're continuing to do, we have infrastructure and application review, uh, service improvements, technology strategic planning. So we're looking at a three- to five-year strategic plan that we wanna develop. Uh, resource planning, based on how many personnel we're gonna need to responsibly, uh, service the city, constituents, and the customers. Uh, budget alignment, so looking at all the actual requirements, uh, based on the budget allocation and the actual spend. the website implementation, so we're working with the web provider. And we're actually making good progress, starting to, I forget the actual date of when it's due to be completed, but we're pretty much on schedule for what we're looking at now. Parks and, Parks and Rec records management system, this is the, I think they call it Civics Rec. So this is gonna allow them to manage all the programs of the, of the parks, which will give you that analysis to say, how many businesses we have and things like that. So that's gonna be huge for that for parks. And then the cost reduction effort, we're continuing to go through all of the different products that we're using to see where we can save costs, consolidate things and, and move forward, which, like the board management, we're currently doing a cloud management. We're looking to see if it's gonna be more beneficial to bring it in-house and save that much of the current cost and also standardizing hardware. So sometimes, this are recommendations, we have, right now, we have all of the departments transitioning over to the city. The county's about to do their renewal in March, so at their renewal, Microsoft is saying that we cannot, if they renew all our licenses and we bring them over, we would still have to pay again outside of the IGA for those same licenses. So what we're trying to do is make sure that we pay the licenses upfront, have the county reduce their costs or their license count, so we don't have to pay them through the IGA and just pay one time for the license that we're gonna end up paying for anyway. Additional technical resources, I'm just trying to identify exactly how many, how many resources we actually need to responsibly support the city and, and make efforts. The purchase of services and storage hardware, there was a technology company that provided us some stopgap equipment that we're currently leasing from them. Some of the, it's kind of a, so we want to look at what it's gonna take to sustain the fire police departments as well as the current departments that we currently have, so we don't have any issues with that equipment. I think some of the equipment, it's kind of like stuff they keep on the shelf, so when people need something, they can kind of give it to them, so we want to get off of under that. The equipment maintenance, as we bring on our departments, we're bringing over all the, most of the technology, if not all of the technology equipment. So that equipment is coming over for whatever price we paying for, but there's no maintenance. So we need to look at maintenance for all this equipment that we're bringing over to make sure in the event of a, of a outage or issue with the equipment. The Wi-Fi solution, the county is currently using a controller-based Wi-Fi solution, which basically they control everything from downtown. The imports that we have in most of our stations, the end of life, their end of life this year, so they will no longer be supported by the vendor this, I think, October or so this year. So recommending to purchase a wireless solution that the city's already adopted for the transitioning departments that are moving over. And finally, the physical security upgrade. We have a couple of departments that are bringing over physical security card access cameras and again, they're being managed centrally, so there's no management of those services that are coming over. So we need to look at a platform for managing the cameras and card access when the actual departments move over. And I think the first department that has something is gonna be police based on the current schedule. So I wanted to share this, you can take a read in this comment. So this is kind of how I base my efforts towards support and my service to, to the cities and constituents. And at that point, I would ask if there's any questions.
So why is it gonna take so long for Parks and Rec to April fifteenth?
Well, the April fifteenth is just their RMS system, so it's not really related to their transition over. So that's just what they had in the project plan for completing the project. So I'm not really sure if, because a lot of this stuff was being set before I got to the city. So they're just going based on the current staff, so we can look at it, see if we can compress that time and escalate.
So do we still need the vendor that we have that's doing, I don't know what? But I don't mean that facetically, I just don't know in technology terms, you know, exactly what they're doing.
Internet.
So.
Internet, yeah.
So do we, do we, do we need to continue with them? Or is there, is there a possibility that we could bring whatever it is in-house? Could you, you know, speak a little bit back there?
Yeah, so what I've done with them, they were currently onsite, so we were paying a little bit more and that's where the reduction came in. So what I did is I had them, we kind of renegotiated a little bit and have them do remote support, which is that's where the forty percent discount or savings came from. We're also looking at other options for support, whether it be in-house or whether we contract with services. So with that, because right now, I'm almost a lone ranger, I have them when I can call, but there's a lot of things going on, I'm trying to get it, get it completed and I have other resources that are also assisting. But the cost factor related to managed support is very high. And we could probably bring in three to four people for what we would typically pay for an outside service. So we're just looking at that, that option. I know within the budget, there was only one position, budget for, which honestly is not enough. But we look at the spend that we were gonna actually have anyway and go back and look at those recommendations for what we're gonna actually need at the bare minimum to support the city.
I see here mobile devices, two hundred and eighty-four. So does that mean that who's gonna have mobile devices?
So if you look at, if you, so right now, we have about, and I'm sorry, I skipped that slide, I don't know if it was outside the slide, definitely not. But a lot of those mobile devices, the police, they have them in the cars. So the cars are lit up and then they have their laptops, have a mobile hotspot on them as well as a, the cell phones. So most of the police, they have cell phones, so that's where the bulk of that is coming from. The next highest department, I think, is fire, the parks only have like two and then just a regular support staff.
Okay, now you went over the time sensitive recommendations, do you have a budget for them?
Yes, I have some quotes that I've received, so I'm putting together a budget now to get to Mr. Malazi. So he has a complete budget, he can start looking at what it's gonna take to get that done. There are some opportunities for less, but foundationally, with, especially the Microsoft agreement, anything you did not put in the agreement, the following year is gonna be more for one, plus it's gonna be on top of what you already paying yearly. So we're looking to try to set a foundation that's gonna be able to support the county and be able to spread the costs across the three-year agreement that they have with the enterprise agreements.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Stripling.
At this point, I have the mayor and City Council committee.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. To executive session.
Oh, hold on, one, one other thing before we go. I want to announce, everybody, this is a long day, I forgot to do it in front, bear with me. Many of us up here last weekend attended GMA conference on Mayor's Day. And those of you who were there, I think you can attest to the fact that some great information was given out in these classes, some of the classes lasted about six hours. One class, right? He thought it was three hours, it was six hours. But on Sunday, at the Marriott Marquis, we were awarded, it's only two cities that was awarded that day. And we were awarded the City of Ethics. You raised, you, let me see, I've got it, it's right here. Yeah, we were awarded the City of Ethics and not just for ourselves, but this award goes to everybody up here on the stairs, those who initiated or whatever you've done, but also goes to you as a community, because we're trying to follow the guidelines that we, we had set for ourselves from the beginning of the time that we were elected. Councilman Gums and I were there to, to accept the award and to a, to a rousing ovation because people say that we were only eight, eight months old. And we still got there. So all the things folks say sometime and all of the other stuff, let us remind you. Just remind you that we're doing good and we're doing well. So I'll give you all a round of applause.
Did you make your motion to adjourn in the executive session? He waiting his out?
Yeah, I just have one quick thing to say. Tomorrow at Southwest Art Center, I'm having a meeting, an event, two thousand and eighteen State of Black Men address, seven o'clock to nine, it's a free event. Anybody that's able to come out to this free event, gonna have a lot of high profile, very profound members of our community there speaking and addressing a lot of issues that we have in our society today. So please come out Southwest Art Center tomorrow, seven to nine, two thousand and eighteen State of Black Men address, sponsor Brother United Equity.
Can we give a second on that? I can't remember all these. All right, probably move to second and third discussion, this is for executive session. Do we statewide?
No.
That's now. And litigation.
Okay, I have a question, I have a question about, we're taking a session for our legal counsel. What, what matters are litigation and what, what matters are? Could you just give me a little further explanation about what litigation is?
So litigation would be anytime there is the potential or the actual filing of a lawsuit in, in a court.
Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Was there any action taken in the executive session?
No, sir, there was no action taken during today's executive session.
There ain't no action taken, I will intitiate a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to close executive session.
I'm going to close executive.
Second.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
I'm bringing it. All the people, raise your hand. Okay, now I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Raise your hand. Let's go home.